Any other questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright. We are cheating by two minutes, but we need approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes that July 12th is written.
One second. Second. Any questions, corrections, corrections? All of the favor?
Aye.
Appointments with individuals interested in being on the select board. So, here's my list. Mr. Viger? Are you Mrs. Stanley?
I asked to be in with some of us.
I'm sorry.
I didn't ask.
Are you Mr. Lulak?
Yes, I am.
Alright, um, I am not sure how we should go about this, frankly. One thing about being a selectman is you're gonna be in public. I don't really think it should be an executive session, personally.
The should, the should, yeah, the decision should be.
Probably.
We should discuss it in the executive session and then come out and make our decision.
What does everybody else think?
Right, if you were thinking that we'd hear from the people that are interested and then briefly adjourn them.
We have an executive.
And then make a decision then.
Do it at the end, do it at the end of the meeting.
We have an executive session already scheduled for later relations. We could add that to it if that's okay with everybody. Are you guys comfortable with that, the people that are here?
Hi there, Bonnie's here.
So, I... I'm, this is kinda your...
I was, uh, I was just, I've never had to do this before either. Done, I've been a manager for seven years, but I thought maybe the people that were interested might just express to the board why they wanted to do this. And then I did check with VLCT and they said it's completely appropriate to discuss in executive session, but you have to give your decision in public.
Okay.
That's kind of how I envisioned it, so it's new to me too.
That's, that sounds good to me, um. We'll go in, seeing as there's three of you at this point with Mrs. Stanley, uh, staying on.
I, I said I would do it if there was, you know, if you had to. Then I'm not willing to commit for two years. I was gonna do it till March.
I, yeah, I believe the way this works is you go to the next election.
Next election.
And then, then we elect for the remainder of the three years.
Which would be a year?
Which would be?
One year.
One year, I think it's one year, I think it was one year. So, let's go in alphabetical order, Mr. Lulak, you're first.
Well, I've been on the select board many years in the past, actually besides everybody else and stuff. And I think I have a lot of time to figure something out, what's going on now and the future on this board.
Good, thank you.
Monty Rosati is next. How you doing?
Hi.
The, uh, all we're doing is asking for, uh, why I wanna be on the board. Kinda like what I did on my summer, my summer, you know, essay. Um, why do you wanna be on the board?
Well, I'm a new now, I've been on board almost four years. I think I have, I have to say, I could be a long time maybe too. And I think I have some major career.
I appreciate the positivity. We are moving forward. I said I appreciate the positivity, we are moving forward. Mr. Viger?
My name is Chad Vijay.
Oh, Vijay, I'm sorry.
That's alright.
We had a chief, or we had a police officer that was Viger, Vijay, sorry.
I learned very quickly that I pronounce my name differently than Ray did when I moved here. So, I've been a Fairhaven resident for, been over a decade now. My wife grew up here. In the daytime, I served as the CEO of the recovery house that operates out of home for Ruppert. I am a faculty member at Cassington University. I volunteer with my children's sports as well. So, naturally, I've tried to help people and serve people. And, you know, seeing the direction that we're going in as a town, I want to continue that, not only for myself, but my children as well. They're nine and almost seven, so we're gonna be here a long while and I'd like to see their children's have a variety. That's, that's where my drive comes from.
Any questions for, for folks?
No.
We will.
Do you have any questions for us?
No big question.
Like, as, as a board member, what's the time? And I mean, we have a couple that have some experience and pretty well understand more about what it's like to be a select board member, but if you have any questions for us of what's the time commitment, would, that kind of stuff, or anything like that?
I don't have any questions right now. A good friend of mine serves in a different municipality, so I see the time commitment that he puts forward.
So, he already slapped you and hit, and said, "What's, what's wrong with you?"
Okay.
If there are no questions, what we will do is do a little deliberation, and it makes sense to do it when we have an executive session at the end of the meeting. And we will make a public announcement and a vote at the end of the deliberative session, and then we will inform everybody. Can't thank you all though for applying.
Really appreciate you raising your hands and putting me in, because we don't get a lot of people doing that, so, thank you.
After the person is nominated, you'll have to come take the oath of office before our next meeting, so that you can participate in our next meeting.
And that's essentially done with the town clerk?
Town clerk, yeah.
Anything else? Alright, we will move on.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, folks, really. Five minutes for public comment. Bonnie?
Just one. National night out is next Tuesday on the Tucker from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And for the first time, it does not fall on a Tuesday with the select board at a meeting. So, I'm hoping you will all stop in.
What, what time did you say it was again? What time was it, 6:30?
6:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
Okay, 6:00 to 8:00 PM.
It's gonna be a lot different to here. Stop in and find out what's really coming up.
Usually, yes, right? In the park? In the park?
Yes, in the park. Across the street.
I'm gonna be on vacation, I won't be here. I'm going to be on vacation, I won't be here. Yeah, I know, I got a lot of nerve. Any, any other public comment? Department head reports. You up?
So, busy, busy last couple weeks. We finally had Pike in town milling on Friday. The guys that went ahead before the milling got here, because they were, the mill was a little later than we were thinking getting here, went through all of Forest Street and went through the manhole inventory up there, trying to see what hall would actually physically need to be dug up to be rebuilt for the new pavement. Thankfully, they've only found six that they're oddball manhole sizes and the bricks we're needing of fixing that will need to be fixed once the shim comes through. The shim is hoping, Pike's hoping to be back Thursday, Friday, new shim on For- uh, Forest Street, Furnace Street. Once that happens, unfortunately, next week is when the roadside mower's gonna be in town. So, focus next week will be roadside mowing, so that tractor's gonna be out running 24/7 if we can help it. Trying to get our roadside mode and our brush pushback to that as best we can. So, the following week, so two weeks from now after the shims down, those six manholes guys will be up there digging those up and rebuilding them to the proper height. The rest of the manholes on that street, they were able to get them cleaned up and the bricks are okay underneath it. Add risers to them, so we can bring them to just below the top of that asphalt. With the shim coming through, we should be able to hopefully get it to close to perfection, so that we know what the finish grade's gonna be when we set those, the manholes that need to be reset. Furnace is the same way, shim comes through and then we'll be able to get down there and do that. Forest Street, of course, we're gonna get some ditching done up there. That'll be after shim, so we have that final grade termination once the paper comes through. The paper's gonna come through with the shim and that moves around a little bit as the paper sets its shim course. The final course is gonna be one inch, so we know from, once that shim goes through, it's one inch from there is top. So, we can set all of our grades for manholes and for the drainage lines. On that, the guys who had, been getting prepared to do crosswalk paving, hoping to get to that yet this week. Tomorrow, upon Carvin, we're looking to do the final repair on that manhole, or sorry, the water main. Still haven't got the piece that we want made for repair, so we're gonna have to do a, a wet fix. We're hoping to be able to do it dry, but the part hasn't come in, so we're, unless we get the line shut down completely, somebody's gonna be getting wet tomorrow, taking out the old cork and putting in tapping salary over that hole. So, they've, they've prepared themselves, hopefully, for tomorrow with a couple of fresh clothes when the first thing come in, so. So, next week, roadside mowing and trying to do as much work as we can on Ford or Furnace once the shim comes through. Once that shim's done, we get our work done, we're hoping to get Pike back before school opens. Depends on how everything works out with us getting our work done and how fast Pike will come back. I know we don't wanna interrupt the school, but the paving up there should be no more than two days for finish, so unfortunately, we have to, we're gonna have to work around us doing the paving. We'll have alternating one-way traffic and all that stuff, which is my duty to delay those days that they're up there, so we'll hurry back.
Can you alert those, alert the school now, so there's no surprise, and just tell them that you'll keep, you'll keep them posted?
Yep, I can do that for sure. Water department, also doing the weekly readings and cleaning more and more inside the plant, outside the plant. Shut off notice has went up today, shut offs start tomorrow, specific to that. Wastewater plant, thank you, Mr. Greeno, for coming down today. We had a walk-through going over one of the punch, one of the more major punch lists of the exteriors of the buildings, interiors of the buildings that are, at this point, mostly completed. So, we just have a few punch list items that we still haven't got to yet. Bigger one for that portion is the exterior caning, interior caning on some of those buildings. So, if you go down there, the plant is functionally much whole minus the garage empty proof. But if you go down there and look at the buildings, they're just, they're not caned nicely just yet. So, if you, the rest of you have time at some point, you know, we're trying to schedule it to come down, maybe before a needed night to just have a walk-through, maybe just in the public, if they're interested to see what that upgrade and everyone knows the money behind it, which is to see actually what it looks like and how it'll work, so. Got a report, or email from VLCT, which is our insurance company, and applied for a loss prevention grant. They help buy safety equipment for the town to lessen the likelihood of an injury to an employee or damage to vehicles or unsuch like that. They did award us the full amount, and this year it's a, usually it's a 50/50 grant, up to $10,000. So, if you want $10,000 worth of stuff, you're paying 5,000, I mean, they're paying 5,000. This year, being nonprofit, they ran into extra money last year, fully funded it at 10,000, so we got that $10,000 award today. With that money, the highway department and the guys working in the road, will be water sewer. We're gonna be upgrading all of our sign packages, so our road closed, our road work aheads, all those signs will be new, new road closed signs, new barriers, new stuff that's visible and all the reflective stuff that's required for statues. Second bitter piece of it is a crane for the back of the wastewater truck that has an electric hoist to it. The unit they use currently to pull pump stations out, um, four of our pump stations, requires them picking up a crane and plugging, hitting it back into the receiver hitch of the truck, going with where they need to, setting it all up. And it's a hand crane that doesn't have enough cable to actually lift the pump from the bottom of the well all the way up. They have to pull it up halfway, try and pitch it to something, reset the cable all the way down. This new one, they'll be able to just swing that lifter around from the back of the truck and roll over the cable all the way down into that pump and just hit the button and have it drop right up to the service entrance. So, that would be mounted in the truck, so it's not something they'll have to in and out of the truck ever again, so. Hopefully, so the grant performance needs to be done in six months. The only one that might be, fit us close, and I can't imagine the VLCT knowing the climate currently, when extended if they have to, will be the crane. Everything else was a short lead time that we have coming through that, so, well, those are great news today. The other part is Pike will be back Thursday, Friday, a little bit of a smooth shim coat to ride on in Forest Street and enable us to hold that one up, so.
Question?
I went down Furnace Street after the boom egg did, or after they ground it. I don't think they cut the crown out enough. I think we're gonna have our same problem all over again, because it's still, it's still a pretty steep crown there. I don't know if they're planning on shimming higher on the shoulders and leveling that out?
That's the plan right now. They took two inches right out the top, middle of that.
Because it's just, I mean, if you go down the road, if you go down and look at it, that crown is still there. And that's, I think that was three quarters of our problem down there before.
So, when they cut, we could have them cut two in the middle and just over an inch on that outside edge, and when they come back through, we're gonna put more on the outside.
So, you're gonna shim it up, so it takes that, it's gonna take the biggest of the crown out, okay?
Yeah, I think they still have, we still have to have some crown.
We gotta some crown, but not what's there now. I mean, there's, there's a lot of crown there. But I mean, that's what, I feel that's what for the water.
As long as that water gets to those, uh, those dry wells, you know? The street's a little different, others, that's not an open-ended drain.
I understand that.
So, you gotta, you gotta take that into consideration also.
But I hope they work, because we wanna do this.
Dry wells worked for a while.
We wanted to do this 10 years ago and they wouldn't let us do it, so we want to put dry wells, wells in, so.
Well, dry wells have a history of plugging up over years. They have to be redone. That I can tell you from experience.
Dig them out.
Dig them out, open them up, open the veins up, put more stone in, you're back in business again.
Other questions?
Thank you, sir.
Are you here to represent the police, or?
I'm here to deflect. Yeah, Bill is out for the rest of the week, so I just came here just, the only thing I was just texting with him. He just wanted, you know, just to give a kudos out to Sean Hewitt for last week. We had got the call on Airport Road for a man that was crawling in the road, and he crawled into the bushes. So, he went up there, didn't have, he had no idea what was going on, and was looking around, looking around, ended up talking to, um... Talking to some people up there, and said, "Yeah," he said, "that we had a motor, or a four-wheeler that went flat up the road." And so, he started looking in the bushes there, and how he even saw the gentleman that was injured, 50 feet into the thick brush. And he called out to him, he called back, and for whatever reason, why he crawled in the bushes, we still don't know, but he ended up with a broken hip and wasn't gonna crawl up anymore. So, John did a good job finding him, and he actually crawled into the brush and stayed over there until rescue. Did fire go in there?
Yeah.
And got successfully out of there. That was about it, other than he just, he would've got the report done today, but.
Do you, do you know any of the results of that accident yesterday on 48?
Um, it was broken rear axle.
Anybody get hurt?
No.
Geez.
I know.
I don't understand how they not, because it was a, it was a ragtop?
I know. He had a, obviously, he had a seatbelt on.
It was just the one person that?
Just the one person, and he was walking, talking, he was fine.
Good.
So, yeah, it's, it's, nobody else was.
To look at that vehicle, I wouldn't have thought anybody walked away.
Yeah, no, I wouldn't either, I saw. No, he's fine, he was just a broken axle, right out the road he went.
Other questions?
Doing good.
Uh, we'll start with the congratulations, or condolences, depending on how you see it. Eileen celebrated, Eileen in the up front office, she celebrated her one-year anniversary on July 12th, so congratulations to her. Mr. Greeno, you asked at the last meeting about the Adams Street Bridge.
Yes.
Yeah, we find out about that no later than August 12th. So, that's when, that's their deadline to give us, and that's probably when they'll tell us. That's a Friday, and that's typically when they do that. Unless they're awarded, and then our representatives will tell us sooner, though they shouldn't.
Is that, where is that coming from, that request? Is that the Bringshendes one?
Nope, this, this money's coming straight from FHWA DOT. It's the, they call it, it used to be Tiger Grant, now it's called a Rise Grant, or Raise Grant. This is the competitive portion of it.
Okay.
Uh, I reached back out to the Housing Trust and the Housing Authority. We are gonna meet this Friday, so if anybody's interested in sitting down and chatting with those folks.
What, what time?
I'm waiting for the last guy to give me, uh, give me a good time, so it's between 9:00 and 10:00, or between 2:00 and 4:00 or something. I'll let you know, I'll send something. Friday.
I got a trip from 9:00 to 1:00, so if it's in the afternoon, it'll be good.
So, we haven't gotten any money so far on the water bill?
Not yet, so the, um, I talked to, I received an email from a young lady that's running the program at State. She said that, that check was, will be cut in two days on the 28th, and it'll be deposited into the Park Administrator's bank account. She spoke, the State spoke to the Park Admin Debbie, and Debbie said she would bring us that check on Monday morning.
Is that just for the water, or is that for the back taxes also?
Just for the water. Yep, they're focusing on water. What they need, so what, there's.
Friday to 28th, the 28th is?
The 28th is, I think, is a Thursday.
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 So, they got two days.
I think it's August 31st.
Yeah, no, I mean, so they're saying that they're gonna, they're gonna send us a check. They're cutting the check Thursday.
Direct deposit into a bank account.
Oh, yeah.
And then Debbie's gonna give us, give us a check for that amount. How it should work is we should get a check for that amount. Yep. No, but, so with speaking with the State, they're having difficulty with people in the park signing up for the program? And the only way they can get that back tax money is if everybody signs up, then there's... That produces lot rent, which then produces tax money for us, so that's, um...
Can you, and I know this is, can you give us a breakdown of what is owed? What is owed in back taxes in each individual trailer, and then what is owed by the park itself? And that's, that'll be information, that's information we... I don't know what difference it makes, to be honest with you, but it does somehow.
There are some inside the trailer park that are delinquent and they should be sold.
Right, but we don't want them. I don't think anyways.
Speaking of, our representative, Peter.
Way in.
Peter Welsh did get our, uh, our additional funding for the town hall project. He did get that into the federal spending package, um, which I thought that was just kinda neat anyway, um, to have money sitting in the federal budget for us. But they still have to vote on the federal, you know, they have to pass their budget, and we know how that's been going these last few years. We'll see what happens. Car show was Saturday, the annual chamber car show. They provided us with their information. Aaron said water shut offs begin tomorrow, red slips are out. August 20th, from 11:00 to 2:00, at the playground behind the, um, behind elementary school, we're having a celebration for the playground. Linda will be there with former Mayor Murphy. They'll be handing out hot dogs and drinks and just a small little fat.
When is that?
August 20th. From 11:00 to 2:00. We did reach out to, and this is pertinent to the discussion later in the meeting, about a bond vote. We reached back out to V-Trans about the paving downtown, right on Main Street. They pushed that paving back again, that's sitting at 2025 now. So, it was 20, was this year, then it's next year, and now it's the year after.
And before it's done, it'll be 27.
That's the way they're doing it. And the big news that, uh, we're, we're trying something a little different down at Highway. We moved the guys to a 10-hour workday, four days a week, started on Monday. This, this idea's been floated since I've been here, and I've been reluctant to try it, but after speaking with a couple of towns, just, I spoke to two directors, um, they had glowing reviews about this. They said they saw more work getting done. It was easier to get work done for setup and breakdown times, and it's not at all, and it's not a whole year thing, so we'll do like, try what everybody else does. If this works, it'll be a summer thing, um, and then back to regular schedule in the winter for plowing. But, um, right now, they're doing that, it's been a two-day test. I wanted to test it through September to see how it goes. If it works great, and if it doesn't work, then we'll go back to the way we were doing it, but.
I have to disagree with this, because now, if there's a water break on Friday, we gotta bring them back in, pay them time and half money. And we don't have that much time and half money in our budget. It'll only take a couple of water breaks to bring in four guys for a day that they should've been working and, and pay them time and half money. I think it's, I think it's a bad choice. These other towns you've talked to, neither one of these towns do their water and sewer. It's all done by another contractor or the people do it themselves. The Public Works Department here is responsible for the water and the sewer digups and replacements. And I just feel that we're defeating their purpose. I don't think you're gonna get that much work done, and I think using up our overtime, that way, it's gonna kill it for something else.
I've, my crews have worked 10-hour days for a long time in the summer, and, um, it's been pretty successful over the years. But I will say that we had coverage on all five days. We had alternated some people. coverage on all five days, we had alternated some people. I don't know, this crew's not that big, so I don't know if you have that option, um.
Working right now, there's only three guys there.
Right.
And then we go to get back full strength, the four guys at the highway, that's cutting out the day on each end, and there's only two guys essentially there.
I think you could get more work done really in a ten hour, especially when you got set up and there down.
Well, there's no time, it's get time proportion and get some work.
How many, how many actual water breaks do you have in summer time?
They're, they're fairly minimal on a day. Well, usually it's something that, I go back to, it's four, forty hours, we make this what we pay the badge to be here for. So if the break happens after on a normal day, on Monday at three o'clock, it's time and a half. If it breaks on Saturday or Sunday, it's time and a half. I did feel better off suited to have our guys done as much work, because if you're in those forty hour days and a fourteen schedule, be more proactive about stuff. Making sure that we're paying attention to our system and go as well as we can, that there's an issue there and we investigate it before it's, of course. There are catastrophic breaks or something that just pops up, but there are very few, few in between, and it's something that needs immediate response that puts all of them up the cloud up a few. So usually it's water coming up with so much curbs now that we investigate it, determine it and wait till it is working to handle it.
Answer your question, I, I'm, the fact that we have our DPW crew down by design, not filling one position, we're using three instead of four, I think is a little different, and if, if ten hour days, we're, we're trying, we're gonna say, if it's something that coverage next year, I would like to call upon my support by saying that once we're able and we hire back and we have four, would like to revisit and not automatically go in to next summer, the ten hour days without having a, let's have a discussion about that, and we'll see if what we're fearing is gonna happen, or it doesn't happen, and, and we're fine. And I'm saying, right now, we're kinda holding them back because we're, we're, we only have three people there and it's gonna be more effective.
Basically, basically right now, you're talking about five weeks. So that's five Fridays. You know, chances of having a water leak in them five Fridays is pretty, pretty slim.
Well, if you do the math, you got a hundred and sixty-eight hours in a week, you're talking about eight hours on a hundred and sixty-eight. That's like five, four percent of the time.
I, I think that the only, the only that I've worked four hour, or four, four ten hour days, I, I liked it. And it's, it's, it's something, it's kind of a gift to those guys in a way. Um, I would like to see you guys, you and, you and Aaron develop metrics so we could compare and contrast. It'll be a little difficult because we don't have anything beforehand, but if you can put up some metrics, just so you can, you can, you know, some sort of dashboard, you can show us what's happening. Um, because obviously Jay's not, Jay's not, uh, favorable, the bottom line is, it's not our valet hook until it goes bad, then it is. And what, it, it, then it's on, you, our, our, our comeback is YouTube. So it, it's a management thing that if it works and you can make it work and it's fine. I think you're hearing qualified support from three out of four so far.
I think the guys got it, I think the guys can make it work, they really do.
It's a, it's your comment that it's a gift to them, just in their defense, in the winter time though, those guys can go fourteen days, sixteen days straight.
I mean, it's, it's a, but it is, it's, it's, believe me, it's nice to have that day.
Oh yeah?
I mean, it feels good, but, um, so I, that's why I would consider it a gift, and I don't mean that as any, I don't mean that as a slight, I mean that as a, it's, it's, it makes sense, but, I mean, I'd like, like to be able to say, quantify it and say, show me how this really worked. And that's, I'm, you know, it's, I'm leaving you guys to that, it's your, it's your deal anyways, it's not the select, we're not really involved with the day to day. But if it goes bad, we're the first ones gonna hear about it, and you're gonna be the second one to hear about it. But that's a promise.
But it's a two way street, it's gotta benefit that.
Yes.
As much as it benefits the town, but you never put that first.
Exactly.
Exactly. They gotta prove it every day.
Yeah, and, uh, yeah, they, they gotta, they gotta make sure that they're on that, that ten hour is working. Yeah, and I think they will. I hope they will.
Where do they want?
Any other comments? Anything else?
So just to get back to very quickly, um, about the project downtown. Uh, I did bring a, a, a study that was done in nineteen eighty, the revitalization study. And I, I, I think this, I think this is, I mean, this is, this brings up a point, back then, um, the local, and this is under the local priorities section in nineteen eighty, so is that forty, forty-two years?
Forty-two years.
Forty-two years ago, um, our local priorities for downtown Fairhaven, street lighting is inadequate. Uh, parking area south of Park Place should be redesigned. Uh, truck traffic poorly channeled downtown, pedestrian crosswalks are poorly marked and need additional protection. Uh, they're going too fast, vehicular traffic proceeds too fast downtown Fairhaven. No pedestrian, no protection for pedestrians. Sidewalks are not well maintained, this is nineteen eighty, we've been, we've been reliving, this Groundhog Day, we keep reliving this. Um, uh, bicycle parking should be part of our urban design, which is something we've talked about. Uh, and sidewalks, um, should be improved on the business block to accommodate additional landscaping. All of the things we talked about today and all of the things that the board and the town are moving forward with, uh, came forward back in nineteen eighty, and it was a local priority. This is not something that, as one of our residents, Lily and Billwitz, keep saying, is dreamed up by Joe. These projects are asked for by the town of Fairhaven, and they've been asking for forty-two years to get this done. This is where the town wants their money spent.
Probably were gonna get a grant.
I'm sorry?
They were probably getting a grant, they're still waiting for it.
That's right, you see, it finally came through forty years later. So it, it, it kinda, it hits a nerve for me when I hear like, this is just something made up and we're not doing what we need to do. But no, this is what the town's been asking for for years, and that's what we're doing.
There's, there's, there's another thing I wanna bring up in, along that line, so they talk about those memorial plaques and whatnot. They can be incorporated into this new design, the new sidewalks. And most of them trees that were planted down, so they're gone, they're cut down. There's a couple left and they are a big problem. And they were planted underneath the power lines, which everybody knew wasn't gonna work out when it happened.
When they were planted, there was a plan, they were supposed to have hired, well, Pleno's the one that was supposed to have done it. And then when he decided that he couldn't do it. I believe it was the Chamber, I could be wrong, but I believe the Chamber was supposed to hire somebody to keep all these trees cut down. Am I correct?
Well, at the time, it was supposed to be.
If you see the trees that are in front of Abishans up here, that's the way those trees are supposed to look down Main Street. They're supposed to be low, they, I don't think they're supposed to be over like eight feet, that was the best they're supposed to be. They're gonna be crowned and rounded, that's what the.
They were supposed to be.
Maintained every year.
Maintained, uh, every year.
But doing those things doesn't stop it.
But it's, but the thing is, it wasn't, it wasn't a town responsibility, and it wasn't on the DPW or anybody else. This was supposed to have been an outside deal to take them trees. I would like to cut the tree in front of our building, but I don't wanna get shot, so.
I gotta change, huh?
Doing a hard job, doing it.
Um, one other thing, while we're discussing this whole thing with Main Street, what is the, why can't we try to, there's twenty-five mile an hour speed limit again?
We can.
The same design as we had before, I mean, the, I think it was like, go up past the Catholic church here. It was gonna be in front of Great is School and Main Street, correct? And around the park.
Yeah, it started up here on Washington, I, I can read, I can get the information.
Why can't we get that back on the ballot again? Don't we have a, don't we have a vote coming up here shortly or something, or is it too late to?
Oh.
Or November.
Right, or November is probably not too late. No, we should be able to get, but it's a, it's a board, it's a board thing anyway, change the ordinance. Um, the, the reason it was switched back is because there was petition to switch it back.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, but I mean, I think we should try it again, cause there's, after that petition came out, there was a lot of slack about having to take it back to thirty fi-, or thirty miles an hour.
Yeah.
And I just feel that, um, it, it would also help the gentleman at the foot of the hill that was in here last week with the truck traffic, slow them down, you know, and I just feel that we should put this back on the ballot again.
I think some caution lights would make a big difference, I really do.
Up on, like on twenty-two?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you go, you, you go up twenty-two A into, you start down into the villa to pretend, they have caution lights.
Yeah.
It slows people down, you know?
Those flashing when it tells you you're going too fast?
That, yeah.
That works as well.
That works, that works well.
That works as well as catching me every time.
Yeah.
I like the new ones with the big hammers on them.
A big hammer?
Big hammer, comes down and hits it.
And ordinance and all that would be a good point, or a good time at that point to discuss this issue that was, hasn't been there in a while, a bit trucked out here, how far back. You wouldn't want to, you know, park anywhere if you were looking to do all that stuff.
Oh yeah, yeah, that's, that's a good time.
Certain amount of feet back from.
Whether we pinpoint a spot or we just call it out in the ordinance generally that, you know, from X Y. We'd have to check, of course, the manual and track, track the control.
Why, why couldn't you do that for any intersection, have to be set back a certain amount of feet?
Yeah, yeah, check the manual, make sure we're not trying to step over a guideline and we're not allowed.
Yeah, I mean, there's a couple other places where they park on an intersection, it's tough to look around.
Yeah.
So that, that would be the time to do that.
Does the board want me to put this on an agenda?
Yeah, well, why don't you, why don't you give us the ordinance and we can look at it next time and then time out.
We just have to, we'd have to add that thing on the, parking on the intersect, on the intersections.
My only comment though is, the last time the board made a decision and did it, to twenty-five miles an hour, that was the petition that went on the ballot, and the taxpayers said, put it back to where it was. I'm not comfortable saying we can, we have the ability, we can make that decision, the taxpayers told us once, no. Unless the taxpayers say yes on twen-, and before we change it, I would rather go back, like, I think Jay was saying, taxpayers have to say yes.
They said yes the last, they said yes the last time, on the ballot, they said yes.
They said, they said yes, take the twenty-five mile an hour and put it back to thirty-five.
They voted for the twenty-five mile an hour one first.
Before, before it got changed?
Before, before the, before the petition come in.
And then a petition came back and then they voted again and said no?
Yes.
So again, I'm, I'm back here saying, I don't want someone coming up to me and saying, Glenn, what part did you underst-, are you not understanding? We, you come back twice on an option tax that we told you no, no, and no, and until they say yes again, I, I won't support changing to twenty-five mile an hour.
I don't have a problem on the ballot either.
And put on a ballot, and I'm saying, and if they tell us yes, then, then fine, it's the taxpayers told us to, to go in.
Safety issue.
But it is, but I, I still, I still say that these caution lights with that thirty mile, it starts blinking, you're over speed, that's gonna make a big difference.
Those are, those are effective.
I think the best one's the one going in Woodstock. That's got blue lights on it.
Oh yeah, I know that, that'll get you.
Yeah, and that, that comes on within a mile before you get to it, and so it's, but the blue lights flash, it really alerts it, it does alert you.
That would be a good way to go, that, that does, those are.
I mean, twenty-five miles an hour or thirty miles an hour is not a big difference if you got, if you're driving without a cell phone on one hand and an airbrush on the other. Okay, you should be able to control your vehicle.
Been watching me drive.
But if your question was, Bob, do we wanna look at the ordinance that we have? Fine tune it, tweak it with some proposed changes that Aaron was talking about, about for how close eighteen wheelers can get to intersections. Also, we can have, continue the discussion of, I'm not against a twenty-five, I, I support twenty-five miles an hour. I'm not against that, I'm just saying, I'm against us wasting our time doing it and being told, now put it back again. I don't wanna waste my time until I know that it's supported, cause the last time it wasn't.
There's a lot of things we waste our time on.
Well, I, that's.
I think closing this up is gonna make some, quite a bit of a difference.
Yeah, and I think really. I, I think it's, it's probably not, uh, you're, you're gonna get some opposition one for both. And it's just a matter of who does the best politics, I mean.
You're gonna, you're gonna have bad apples driving through town, no matter what the speed limit says, and that's where these guys.
They're gonna go fly.
You know?
Or we buy a lot of sun.
I mean, I mean, we're, we're putting a lot of discussion in the twenty-five mile an hour downtown. After we pave Fourth Street, the speed zone, the new speed zone and down is gonna be Fourth Street.
I already was gonna suggest that that one, that, I was already gonna suggest that that be part of that show, because, you know, Fourth Street, Carnarvon Street. Kind of the town compact.
I've, I've been approached at least twice now about slowing, uh, once yesterday, like, cha-, to change the ordinance to make it twenty-five in the, in the compact. Yeah, cause it's, the people do, they go very, it's not gonna, if you're going forty though, twenty-five is not, you know, you're already breaking the, breaking the rules, so.
Twenty-five is gonna be tough for you and me.
I practice. But I, I, I support that, and I think maybe.
I, even like Fourth Street, once we pave Fourth Street, it's gonna be a drag strip. As bad enough as it was before, but, um, and, you know, it's bad enough right now trying to get a bus off, the schools, from the school.
It's a drag strip right now, would it all chewed up?
It's smooth now.
That's what I mean, we're driving faster around it now than we were a week ago.
All right, so we get the, get something we can tweak it and come up with a proposal for a vote.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I can get some language, we have time, till August seventeenth is when we have to get our language to the Secretary of State, so there's time with the language.
How about, look, check in and see what some of these lights cost, some of these blinking lights.
There, there's probably grants, you know, that, that, that safety and DOT will probably help there.
We just got this one that was clipped in front of the school, uh, Dollar General, the one for the school, that cost us twenty, cost the insurance company twenty-five hundred, twenty-nine hundred, so that's a hole in the whole deal. So it's not, it's not outrageously expensive.
I believe we have one already, those flashing signs, but the problem is it's getting powered, they get it powered. That's, that's been the whole hangup with, where we put it underwater, it's not moving at all, and we get a power which, we're able to come to the helm.
Do the sol-, do the solar ones not work well, or?
Um, I don't know, this, we had gotten a grant several years ago, and that's not solar power, no, they already told us that, yeah.
Yeah, no, I know that one, but I'm just wondering, the newer ones are, you see our solar. So, I mean, we're just wondering if they work.
LED, we have one, we see a hole in.
So we have to bite the bullet at least once.
Why couldn't you put something like that down at the foot of the hill, it'd come off a pole, right there.
Well, you could, you could do it coming in twenty-two, down by the bow and alley, just pulls there. Where you, where the speed limit drops to thirty miles an hour.
Yeah, you'd have to put it, I mean, here, you know, here, opposite there.
Yeah, yeah.
To be put it all the way down, it'd have to be forty to the, you know, like right at, uh, Academy Street.
In front of my house.
Well, we could, we could plug into your house.
You're still looking forty, you're still looking forty's old.
Okay, well, let's, have you got anything else?
No, sir, that was the, which was kind of a lot.
Uh, salt shed discussion, you'll have some feedback on that.
Yeah, so the, the state did call me, Ross, uh, our program manager at the state, he was curious what we were up to yesterday. Um, I told him we were talking about it today, so, um, just the, the quick numbers, uh, financially, I mean, to make it, to make it financially feasible without the grant, uh, the town has already committed eighty-two thousand. Just the, the quick numbers, uh, financially, I mean, to make it, to make it financially feasible without the grant, uh, the town has already committed eighty-two thousand and one thirty-six. Um, the non-state grant was fifty-two thousand.
What is that, non-state, where did that come from?
Lake Champlain Basin, um.
Oh, okay.
LCP, BP.
There may be some more money there as well.
Yeah, I've been sitting on this for like three years, I don't know if they'll give me any more money right now, if I wanna see a project done.
There, no, there's, there's another, there's another pile of money that, that I, that I'm familiar with that I'll let you know about. It, it has to do with.
Are you saying that, uh, they have more money than they spend right now?
That was, that was that thing we're on.
Yes, that's what I'm talking about.
Oh, that's what you're talking about, oh, well, there you go, yeah, that might work.
That's, if you can, if you can imagine a non-perm- non-permittable project, doesn't, doesn't need a permit, it's what we're overseeing. Which, there ain't many, but there, I've got a whole bunch of, um, work on what, what's, what's in their sc- in the scope of that, so I can show you that and see if anyone with that. Getting, getting sold out of the lake, out of, uh, the, the river is worth it.
But, but we've already spent fifteen thousand, um, on engineering and advertising, uh, which brings us to a total of one hundred and nineteen thousand dollars for salt shed. So if we can spend that much money, that or less, then it would be financially feasible. If you spend more than a hundred and nineteen thousand, then you're, you're tapping further into town funds.
Ted, when you had the conversation with the state people, did you find out, so like we had, uh, we did all kinds of stuff to get our wetland permit for the one that we're not building? The seven hundred thousand dollar, um, version. Um, I'm trying to understand why that permit, whatever, that money we spent, wouldn't cover anything that we put there.
Your wetland permit will cover anything you put.
So, so we don't, so there's no more additional money having to go to the state, no more additional permitting for, if we put something, Jersey barriers and, or something different than the original?
Uh, for the, for the, so for the state wetlands, we would just have to let them know what we're doing, because of what we said, but, uh, no, there's no more permitting involved in that.
Okay, because I, when I, when I looked at the, the statement there that we have to talk to them about the permit, and I'm saying, wait a minute, we're not taking, building the Cadillac?
I couldn't get through my brain either.
We already gave them a bunch of land and a, and money for the permit, not gonna pay any more extortion from, from the state, and that's, that's the way I feel that it is, so, uh.
No, no, we just need to let it work through, and for the, for the funder, we just need to, we also need to, uh, let them know, because they could say, well, we don't want you to do that with our money. I don't think they would do that, but.
Okay.
Who, who's gonna say that?
The, the private, the non-state grant, the Lake Champlain Basin program.
Southern Lake Champlain.
Southernization.
Water, water control, water quality, something.
So are you looking for, for us? That as long as you don't exceed that one nineteen thirty-six to move forward, is that what you're looking for here today, I'm just trying to see what you want?
I guess I, I guess at this point I need direction, because there's, there seems to be opposition to try to get additional grant funding, um, with the thought that we could just kind of do it ourselves. And if the board wants to go in this direction, we can put an advertisement out and say, hey, we need to shed this big, and see what we get, that would be under no restrictions, state restrictions.
I believe we don't get bids for, for the Cadillac version, we get, take the state out of the equation, I believe we'll get bids for the new thing, but we'll, you'll have to, you'll have to spec it out.
I know we had that site plan, but do we have a building plan for this salt, or anything?
We have an engineered tarp system plan.
We do.
That's in that, uh.
Pardon?
That's in that drop, that's, I believe in that drop farther back.
I didn't see it, I could've, I could've missed it.
I did, I'm sorry, I didn't know if the copy I gave you doesn't have that in, but we have an engineer plan for the building.
So, that engineered plan should be able for a contractor to put a price on that and give it to us.
That's the plan we used, the one we put it out to bid last time, well, every time.
Let's take a look at it and see if there are things that we can make it, that can make it less expensive. Can we do that? I mean, I, obviously, nobody's gonna build a seven hundred thousand dollar salt shed, we're just not gonna do that. But there's got to be a way to make a reasonably workable salt shed for a lot less than that.
Think about it, the farmers down the street down here, they didn't pay seven hundred thousand dollars for the tarp.
Right.
And they put, and they put, they put Jersey barriers around and built it on top, one end's closed off. And when the tank got damaged here last summer from that windstorm and stuff, they came and put a brand new tarp on, it was guaranteed for life.
I was just wondering, you know, like the, in Centarol and that, uh, building's got the wood.
Yeah.
The wooden, you know, it's got that.
That's basically what you're looking at.
So that's what has been bid, nothing fancier than that.
That's what's been bid?
That's what's been bid.
Seven hundred thousand dollars for that?
It's three waste blocks high, seventy-five by eighty reinforced, so we don't bump it over, the steel and extra waste blocks, and then just the tarp over the top that's closed on one end and has a open end for the trucks to get in and out.
And if you're saying if that's what's.
An asphalt pour, that, that's an asphalt pour, it's not even concrete, it's just an asphalt pour.
You don't want concrete for salt.
Right, definitely, right, but that's all it is.
And what, what I'm saying is, if you're saying that's what it is, and it's that basic, and seven hundred thousand dollars, then I'm saying, then we can't afford to put a salt shed in, let's go, let's go back and, uh, I, one time I heard people talk about, you know, they don't have to be brand new Jersey barriers, we can get used Jersey barriers. We, there's a lot of different things you can do, and if they're.
Talking about Jersey barriers, we're talking about these blocks, waste blocks.
Waste blocks, okay.
That's different than a Jersey barrier, right?
But I'm, but I'm, I'm just saying, and if everyone's saying that everything's so expensive because of COVID and everything else, then fine, don't build it now, we can't afford it right now. We're not the only town that's probably sitting in that position, saying, we're not, we're not gonna spend that kind of money.
The first bid that came back, we did revise that plan, made it smaller and changed as the state allowed us to, we had no, no contractor bid that.
The safe bidding process is, if you read through the, the thing, I'm, I'm not surprised nobody wants anything to do with it.
I disagree with cutting the shed in half, because we're defeating our purpose. The reason we wanted to build what we wanted to build was so we can have sand on one side and salt on the other. So that we could, you know, everything would be undercover all the time, and, and I'll tell you, the sand will go a lot farther when it's dry. And you don't, less maintenance on the trucks, because nothing's plugging up, but I can't see building a salt shed half the size. Maybe we're gonna have to lose in fifteen thousand dollars, I don't know what else. I mean, I just, I still think we should look, it's hard for me to believe that tarps are, tarp garages are seven hundred thousand dollars, it just started me to believe.
So we're, uh, two, two things, uh, the number seven hundred is thrown around, and that is the cost, was the bid cost, but that's not the town's cost. Like, we say seven hundred, the town has eighty-two thousand committed to this right now, so to say seven hundred thousand, it's not the town, the state would be.
But you're still.
Due to that full funding to cover the seven hundred.
No, we had, there'd be a little bit extra, but right now we're talking seven, but it's, that's, we're nowhere near that, we're eighty-two. Um, and the second thing is, yeah, a lot of towns are just folding their projects over, we would not be the only one, in fact, we've been very lucky that, um, our projects are moving forward, they're calling us a success. I know, it's, it's remarkable.
It's hard to beat your head against the wall.
There has to be, there has to be a more creative alternative than what we've got so far. It's beyond belief that something that, that simple can be.
You know there's farmers down the road, okay, to put that up?
Yeah, parys, parys are.
No, yeah, yeah, parys.
We could ask around, see if we can get it, maybe a used something.
I don't know, we'll talk to you tomorrow, I mean, we'll talk to you tomorrow. I just keep looking, I mean, I, I just, this, I, I think bottom line, no matter what, we should, we should be assuming that we're gonna move our salt. Because someday the state's gonna come in and say, this is not any good anymore. And if, if we're moving forward, we haven't caved, they're not gonna find us, if we're just sitting here waiting for a miracle, they will, so I think we need to continue on looking.
Another, another thing is down there where you are, back in there quite a bit farther, that ground is quite a lot higher.
That don't belong to us.
They don't belong to us?
Get back into Jack.
Behind us, they own part of it behind the sand shed, the sand pile, but there's a corner, some, part of it is, belongs to Jack Siemens. I think, matter of fact, they might have filled in part of Jack's down there, I'm not sure.
I, I don't know exactly how that can figure out there.
It's kind of an angle type thing going across it.
What I was wondering is that was raised up.
Yeah.
You know, some, you could stay where you are.
Someday, somebody's, somebody's gonna get a wet hair and we're just, they're gonna not plug it.
Then we say, well, the reason we didn't build it originally, because the state kept screwing us over, so. Basically, that's why it's not being put up, I mean, if it been put up the way for what we had to quote for originally, you know?
Then the state is a big, they're a huge pain to deal with sometimes, but, um, it really is, just inflation just destroyed us on this, they just, they just destroyed us.
Well, let's just keep looking and if we can, let's, let's look used, let's look, uh, something a little more creative, I don't know what that is, but I know where it would be if it were me.
We have a poker on, um, but from my understanding, we're not willing to, to do more, if we can get something for the hundred and nineteen, that's where we're at right now, as, as a town.
That's, that's, I'm, you're, you're now in the right ballpark when you're saying hundred and nineteen, I'm not willing to go further than the money we've already earmarked. That ARPA eighty-two thousand, ARPA funds, but there's also more funding on top of that that we were using for match, so we probably, didn't we have some other funding besides the eighty-two?
The town's, the whole, this could have been a free project, but with what's happened, it's, we had to dump in more match, dump in match at eighty-two thousand. We were matching grant for grant.
So of the seven hundred thousand, only eighty-two is town money?
Yeah, yeah, we didn't have enough to cover the whole project through grants and.
That was before it went, the last one went up, we put eighty-two in, we, I thought we put the eighty-two thousand in and it was gonna be, the, the salt shed was costing like two hundred or under three hundred thousand. It doubled in cost, so that, that would tell me that I need another eighty-two thousand of taxpayer money to match them, to get the match back from the ARPA, maybe I'm thinking wrong, but I said, I'm saying, not ready to put any more, I, that's, that's pretty big money for a salt shed.
And, and the state was just saying, just keep going with it and build it anyway, even though you don't have full funding.
Even though we're not funding, and I'm just going.
Could you imagine?
But you're building half of the shed.
Uh, you're building the whole shed.
No, 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 but I mean, but we're only getting half the size we wanted, because they already made us cut it down to half.
They lowered it down, yeah.
Yeah, it was shrunk, I don't remember what they did, it just a little bit of a shrunk up. So, okay, we'll poke around for a buck nineteen, and I guess the state would just have to send the money back, which they, I mean, this is happening across the state, across the country.
Well, don't send it back until they have to work.
See, another, another problem I have is the road base going in there, that's gonna have to be really addressed in order for us to make this work. And I don't think everybody quite understands what you're working with underneath that ground up there, it's just a slop hole, it's mud, it's clay. I mean, you see the road just spring up there, and that's just occasionally going up there and maintaining it. What if you're going in and out with every truck several times a day, plus your tractor trailers and salt going in there? You know, you gotta, you gotta plan on putting a base in there, I gotta tell you, and that's not gonna be cheap.
We'll get some offers for it.
Okay. Treasurer appointment.
Yes, something familiar to us, Miss Tracy Richards did, uh, did throw her hat in the ring to be the treasurer. Um, I think I, did I provide her?
The, the resume?
Yeah, her resume.
This is for, she agreed on the money that we offered?
Six thousand five hundred.
Yep, she said.
Proated, right, kinda?
Yep, she said the money that's there is, is, is fine.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Tracy Richards as our new town treasurer.
I'll second that for discussion, just one other question.
Discuss.
No, I, my, my only, my only question, when I, when I saw that, I said, first, I was going, yes, we've got a treasurer, and then I stopped for a minute, I said, okay, Glenn, now where's the gremlin? Uh, I'm going, uh, is there, and it's more of a, just a, a question around, is there a conflict of interest question with, with, with you being the chair of the board and with Tracy being the treasurer? And I, I would feel remiss if I didn't at least ask the question.
I asked the question earlier today, but I don't think there is, because she's not dealing with anything that the select board is deciding, all she's doing is writing, she's, she's signing checks and balancing the checkbook. That has nothing to do with our, what we're dealing with here. We, we look at it, we check it, you know, we read the balance during the meeting, but I don't see, I don't think there's a conflict, I, 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 I mean, that's just my opinion, I'm not a lawyer, but I just feel.
There, there are state allowed relationship, you know, you can hold, you can be spouses and, uh, the captain has to deal with it all the time. That's all, or, uh, correct, it's, it's a state mandated allowance, okay, if the state allows it, then the question is valid.
The problem is, the problem is that everything's a small town.
Well, I, I understand that, but if, if you can look back to the state and say, the state allows it by, by statute, you at least have, but if, if the state doesn't allow it, then.
So, no, no, I, again, I, I second it, because I think we want to be there, and all, and after what I've just heard here, I'd say, I think, I'm, feel comfortable going ahead, voting on it, I'd probably recommend that Bob.
Way ahead of you there.
Okay, from, from voting, and that way it's, it's, it's real, it's, it's even cleaner in, in my mind on that, but that's, I can't wait to lose my.
So we need.
Another, another thing too is, your, your independent auditors go into play at, at each year also, correct?
Yeah, so, so, yeah, I must say, we moved to question.
Are you okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'm standing, three ayes, I know, I'm standing. That's great news.
It wouldn't hurt probably if, if, uh, you stayed around a couple weeks with her and helped just go through what you've been doing and giving her some idea. I don't think that's, you know, just kind of help her out, I'm sure she's more than capable of doing it, don't get me wrong, but it's easier to have somebody just kind of point out the way things been going, you know? And she, tell her she can start yesterday.
I was gonna have a question, will, will she take care of that?
We might need you one more time.
I'll, I'll take care of the checks to, and then go.
She still needs to be sworn in, so nothing's official yet.
Good.
Okay, moving on to new business, chemical tank purchase.
Just touched with three different companies, uh, got numbers back, uh, for each product's tanks. Um, investigated scenario we got back with the quotes was for each product, so it's got two products up there that need some change, tanks out for, Tostic soda for the pH stabilization of the water, and the alum, which helps with the flocculation of the water coming into the plant. So for each of those products, we're going from one big tank to two individual tanks that'll have meters on them, be able to be hooked together with individual valves, so we didn't pick and choose a tank, or we're gonna have them on at the same time. However, um, the better price of all the quotes.
However, the better price out of all the quotes would end up being 16,000 and about $200 for each product. So 32,000 and change to do just the tanks. So what I'd be asking for is to spend 32,000, looking to spend no more than 35,000. What we have is we'll get the new tanks in, we're gonna have to decommission the old tanks. So we have to clean them out and the chemicals in them are hazardous materials. So we'll have some disposal costs for any residues that's left over in the tanks from them being there for 30 years now that I'm not, that I've put into new tanks. We're going to hopefully put just brand new product. And the way it looks at the time it's working out right now is Mike's been ordering some totes or 55 gallon drums of the chemicals, so we can switch those tanks out when the time comes and just have fresh chemicals going into those new tanks. And I know you guys wanted to pull this from the capital reserve for, to do this project. So for us would be needing, I believe, up to $35,000 at this point to purchase the tanks. And it will leave me in the realm of $2,600 to have them piped in and to, or sorry, to remove the old ones, which we're doing in a house as much as we can minus hazardous materials removal. We should be able to clean the tanks and hopefully get the chemicals into proper storage containers for removal from the site disposal. The one that scares us is the cost of soda, that stuff isn't great. So if we have to have an outside company, that cost might go up. But to get a number on that would be once we finally have that tank almost ready to decommission. So for the tanks themselves, just to purchase the ones quoted, we're looking at a total of 32,396 dollars. And I thought it would be just to ask you guys for permission to spend no more than 35,000 dollars in a chemical tank replacement project. At this point, it's some money for us to get those new tanks in, piped up. The electronics are up to them, so we have electronic measurement of the levels inside those tanks. We have a more accurate reading of what's in those tanks versus popping the tank lid every day and putting out energy. So, you know, a couple inches more or more of it looks.
Availability?
The better price, well, 10 to 12 weeks after drawing approval. So we'll have to say, yes, we want to buy these, we'll send out the drawings of exactly what they have specked out with their engineers stamp on it, and we have to prove a saying, yes, that's exactly how we want it to look. And then it's 10, 12 weeks, so we're looking at.
Do you still get, you'll still be in it before winter?
Pretty tight, but yeah.
Yeah, I mean, but for.
Before it's cold.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so then the change up time will be, as big as depending on that, it's gonna be how long it takes us to determine how, how much chemical will need to be removed that we do not want to transfer into those new tanks.
Is 35,000 realistic when you're talking about hazardous space removal?
If we keep it in-house, I believe it'll be close. The thing that will be is if we open that tank up and determine we can handle it in-house, whether we don't have the equipment to do it. So by nature, those tanks are confined space right out the back. To enter them, they have to find space. A way around that is to not make it confined space, start cleaning the tank down and cutting it downsize as we go. We need to make sure that we can maintain tank integrity to be able to get the chemicals out at the bottom at the end without, if we cut into the wrong thing, have it just split downsize and lose the chemical scent. But that's some, to get a number, I know Tom had gotten a number way back in the day for companies coming in to do a full decommission of those. And if you're talking place, the price of what we're popping right now just with that alone, so, or sorry, that price on top of the project.
Tanks are pretty much gonna be emptied though before, we're gonna use as much product out of them as possible.
Yeah, we're planning, so if he's looking into this fall, we have to order anyway the new product. So I, we've already talked and told him, if you're ordering more product, get a tote, a 300 gallon tote or whatever, or two, or 55 gallon drums, however best they can get it to us. So we have that, so once we get that as low as we want to suck that chemical, we can switch over to those new drums. And then it's done, done tow, let's go, get those tanks decommissioned as quick as we can, so.
I say we do it, I say we do it.
Yeah, it's gotta be done.
It's a, it's a priority.
So it's coming out of the.
Capital reserve, do you have the money?
Water, capital reserve. Things like 100.
Make a motion that we, up to 35,000 dollars out of the capital water reserve fund for the new tanks at the water treatment, or water point.
I'll second that.
Other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Authorized to spend 35,000, up to.
Give it that 34,990.
More purchase?
This is the Aaron show today.
You're batting a thousand there, Aaron, keep going.
Handout for that, that was a little break down for you folks. I've been in contact with, we have five different companies at this point. We're running the same issue everyone's running these days, who has what and what is available. Well, there's only a couple of options available. Neither one, well, one's high money, the other one is not our first choice. So we had started this project two years ago by budgeting, I think it was $8,000 a year going into the capital equipment fund to buy a new mower, because we knew this one was getting old, in fact, it's 12 years old now. While it serves really well, it is showing to take quite a few people, including Mr. Young himself, said, you guys have got the money out of that machine, you better move on. So we had budgeted $16,000 to replace it. This should go down through, I have in the columns there, what's in stock, what's, what has to be ordered. Our choice machine would be another Skag turf cutter, two exactly identical except we're brand new to the one we have. However, no time on what the order would be on that, as well as most of the ones that are, that have to be ordered. The only one that's currently on order, but isn't here yet would be the John Deere. But I did not get a trade allowance from them at this point yet. Our choice would be the Skag. And with that, the bagger that we had worked bought a couple of years ago, it fits on our current Skag, would go over to that one. All these other tractor, or all these other prices here with the trade allowance include buying a new bagger, that our bagger that forces, for Skag will not fit. The Kabota will not fit, the John Deere will not fit, the Xmart.
So all these other numbers are with the bag?
With the bagger, with the, with the bagger. So the Young's Farm Equipment number, the 15,697 is just the machine. We would be able to reuse our bagger, or if you so wish, we could buy the new machine and a new bagger for the $17,000 and the whole machine is now new again.
So the Skag is at 15,679 with the trade? We're giving them, we're giving them ours and they're giving us a new one for 15,6.
That, that would be mine solely, we can put that there, and we keep that, and our bagger.
And our current equipment can't last to the end of this season to make, make the lead time.
Right, inconsequential, I was gonna say that.
Well, I think, it's not broke down yet, is it?
It's not broke down, but I say that with, two years ago, two years ago, coming to a meeting saying we should replace that, and I was asked what I thought it would need to get through, and I never would have surmised that in less than three months, I'd be buying an $800 seat for it. Because that's what broke it. So while I say yes, it will, it will get through the season to the hazard at this point. I have to make it through the season because I can't stop mowing if it does break.
But you have, you have 16,000 we've earmarked, set aside and saved for the Skag. Without the bag, you're, you're spending the money that we've already put aside and planned on spending, right? That's the way I'm looking, and.
Sorry to miss you for a second.
Well, and so the bagger costs about $1,000 if we didn't get the new, I mean, if we didn't buy a new bag, we just took the money we had and bought the mower.
Yep.
Sounds like you have the money.
Yes.
To do that, if we turned around and found out two years from now we need a new bag.
So a new bagger at this current, in this, right now, everyone's number's almost the same, it's just over $3,000.
$3,000.
$3,000 for a new shed.
Sorry, my, all right, the way it has to repair my deal, but yeah, so a bagger is 3,000. Everyone's number's about $3,000 to $37,000 for a bagger.
And you're recommending we get the Skag with the money that we have now, keep our bagger, is what I'm saying there. And somewhere we're gonna have to put some money aside, knowing it's just, we will have to, it's just when? Probably replace the bagger, right, when we do, okay.
Oh, the bagger is what, three, two or three years old?
Three years at this point.
Three years.
So there's still some length in that.
Is it one parts or is it just a rack?
It's a power assistant, so it has a, had that mouse to the side of the thing that's built for him to help assist him in the back.
So you're, tell your folks, so you're telling me there's $16,000 in there now for that $18,000, $18,000 purchase, correct?
We move on this Skag from Young's, it's gonna be $15,679.
Because he gave us a trade on our old Skag, right?
Yes.
That's what, that's how I read that.
They did give us the biggest trade in the sort of.
Oh, yeah.
So Salem's gave us the most amount.
Right.
Yeah, but that's.
I like the idea of keeping, whenever possible, and the dollars are pretty close, I'd rather spend local than, than out of town. So I, I like the Young Farm Equipment one.
Is that a motion?
If you're, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the Young Farm Equipment bid of 15,679, 20.
One, just one last thing to put out there, so I'm not sure how public it is, but your business, I believe there's available for sale at this point. So just, just so that's out there, so if something happens in the next year or two, that's.
Yeah, but we're, we're gonna purchase this this year, right now.
Whoever, if someone else. Somebody else owns it, they're gonna live in town.
He has to order it, he don't know when he's gonna be able to get it in.
Is there a second?
I'll second, I'll second.
Discussion, more discussion.
The bids actually stipulate that it's, you know, if there's a new owner, they're obligated.
So the order would.
It's a Skag warranty.
Skag order through them, so.
Doesn't matter.
Yeah, it's warranty through them, through Skag.
Warranty, yeah, but I'm talking about, as soon as they sold the business tomorrow, does the new owner, is the new owner obligated?
He'd have to.
The order's canceled, I come back with new numbers on it.
Well, yeah, I would say that if, if that wasn't gonna happen, he would make sure that this order went through.
You'd have to worry about that for days.
We're not, we're not paying for anything before we get a piece of that.
Right, right.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Engineering sewer lines discussion, they're still on.
Part of the overall plans with the downtown paving project, as part of what I see and we should be doing as our paving projects go through, is to make sure we're checking all of our underground utilities before we go putting 100,000s of dollars of asphalt over them. So I had gotten prices back in May on CCTV cameras, CCTV would be Capital Hill, Main Street, sorry, North Main, Main, Prospect, and Core Street at the time. So that, it's not cheap. That number at that point was $22,000. That would be, so they would come through, we would like cleaning up the lines and run a camera down through there to see the current shape of the lines, with an idea of what's going on with them, if there's something that we don't see from up top that needs to be addressed before the pavement comes through. And we end up in this predicament over here where we have a manhole that had a hole inside of it. We just don't look into that underground infrastructure. With the paving not coming through till 2025 at this point, for us would be just more of that discussion in our mind to know that if it's gonna be almost $22,000 just to run a camera down through that set of lines, that's gonna be something we should definitely be prepared to budget for and sure we're spending that money to ensure that we're not in an asphalt or something that's really. A lot of the sewer line stuff can be pretty good out of that from underground, going through liners and stuff, that costs money. But there's certain repairs that cannot be done that way if we needed to. So we paved over it and it was a fix that had to be dug to. And we're doing what we did over here in Washington Street for the hacker and those were in the asphalt, so. For us, I think it pushed off since the state's now saying 25. I asked Mr. Sanderson today whether the likelihood that it would come back to 24. He didn't seem like that would be a thing, but then again, the state decided last fall, they're paving for more well, all the way down through very, a thin mound money. So I just, I'm leery of them moving timelines around just because they have, from what I understand, they have to, there's risk money there in multiple effects. And they're just looking for places to go, so.
And you're saying you don't have 22K in your budget now to do that?
I'm not sure what the sewer capital is, my apologies.
Their request would be to come out of sewer capital. We did spend 60 out of that for the pump station, so you still have 312,000.
The 60 came from sewer sector.
Oh, so you're good, you still have 370,000.
So I'm just saying, if, if, we've got a whole bunch of money sitting around reserve accounts and everything for, I would like to think times like we're going through right now and stuff you're doing, why wouldn't? I, I just, that's two cents.
I think you get yourself a more firm bid, right?
Well, didn't we, we, a couple of meetings ago, we approved a project from River Street around to Adam Street, correct? Or am I thinking of something different?
It was a waterline discussion.
It was waterline, okay, excuse me.
This is sewer now.
Okay, sure, all right.
All this is just to run the cameras through the lines to see what's there.
See what's going on. How else are we gonna plan?
I don't know how you can bid out.
You had to know before you.
Only one vendor I'm aware of that does this, I will bid more, Green Mountain Pipeline is right here in Bethel.
What was the cost again?
22,000.
22,000?
That included Forest Street, which I think still shouldn't be done, but.
That included Forest Street?
It included Forest Street, so there's a reduction there, but I don't believe it would hurt us to still do it to see if there's something that needs to be addressed, whether it didn't, like, fix.
I say we do it.
There's no other real way to find out what we got underneath there, you know?
When did you get that bid made?
Can you just do that?
It's coming out of reserve fund, so I need a motion.
Why don't we do it to not exceed extra little dollars that may be.
That's what I was gonna say, we had to go up like 24,000, just in case something has changed, not to exceed 24,000.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Sounds like Team Spirit.
Second.
Any other questions?
Is the board opposed to do more of the 24,000 if that number was still the number?
No.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Do, do whatever you can fit in in that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. The polls.
Thank you.
Cemetery deeds.
So it's Green Mountain Pipeline. Pipeline, sorry. I don't know if they're in order.
Okay, you, you looking for a motion? Okay, you, you looking for a motion on those?
Yup.
I'll make a motion to sell cemetery lot seventy nine, eighty, eighty one, in section eleven of Cedar Grove Cemetery, to George T. Sheller.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Is that, all those three, is that what these others, there's two.
You sign over here, or you sign.
I'd say I just put a stick ones on that one.
No problem. And while that one's going around, right?
Yup, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to sell cemetery lot eighty seven in section eleven of Cedar Grove Cemetery, to Mary Louise Suya.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Is that all of them?
Yup.
Oh, uh, food truck permit. So, uh, in the packet, I put, uh, I put the peddler or in, intern.
Itinerant.
Itinerant vendor's ordinance, um, well, it's a, Glenn read through it, and he actually came up with this, uh, it. It clearly says vendor or itinerant, peddler or itinerant vendor, and it says from an automobile, truck, or wagon. So I think our current ordinance will cover us for food trucks. Yeah, I, I wasn't imagining this, I was thinking of somebody selling chachkis out of the back of their, you know, but I guess food is for sale, so. I, I didn't know if the board wanted to review this, make changes, or, um, just say go forth.
It looked pretty good in my shelf.
And it looked like the ordinance said, if you've got a big event going on, the select board usually makes the decision, otherwise, it's done on the day to day.
Question I've got, one quick question, Apple Fest and Spring Fling, what's the deal there? Do they all have to get permits from a food truck?
That was per the flood board, I don't believe in air.
Okay, so that's.
It says, it says right in here that.
Okay, cause I didn't get through the whole thing, I just wanted to make.
Special thing.
Special events, uh.
Special event or not, yeah.
Okay. Long as it's covered.
And also, part of this ordinance here says it doesn't cover, uh, like your farmer's market, your farmer's market, of people selling vegetables on the back of their, uh, that's not what this.
Well, that's not.
The agricultural piece.
Yeah, that's an agriculture type thing.
It looked like you had the ability to get there, and if we're all happy with that, I'd like to take food truck permitting that we put in the, it can come off the list.
Yeah.
Because we're, we're good.
You guys will let the folks know, it's like, what, ten bucks a day?
It was, it was just, uh, what it is, is ten dollars for the, the way the ordinance reads is an application fee, and that's it.
That's it.
They, they can, up to, your application that you're putting in can be for, uh, up to a year. Do it for a year if I was the one applying, but, yeah.
So that's, when I talk to those folks, I'll let them know.
Is this? Are we putting in where they can set up and where they can't?
Part of the application.
Part of it says that.
They have to. Name and permit address, any temporary areas. Area to be used, G under Article Five.
I don't think there's any provision though that says they have to set up here and not there, though. They have to tell us where.
Yeah, they have to tell us, and I think we can, we can, that if there's, if there's a question.
We have the ability to approve the license with conditions, approve the license, uh, uh, without conditions, or deny it, is what it talks about here, so. It looks like you got what you need to.
That's great. Extra revenue.
Alright. Back in your court, I think we're back, we're a sidewalk plow discussion.
We need anything on this?
There's something, some word before that.
They don't need anything on this?
Oh, I didn't, do you have pictures? I didn't print out, I'm sorry, guys, I didn't print out pictures. So, yeah, yeah, you sent me.
That's already approved.
Huh? Okay, that's, I just.
Uh, well, well. Yeah, I'm gonna have to ping it to my own personal email, though, cause I don't get my.
Your food way back.
Yeah.
Two thousand fifteen.
Okay, we'll, we'll talk it, and then if, if we can send out some pictures too. Um, so Aaron, thinking, thinking to the winter and all the trouble we've had over the last few winters with tearing upside, uh, tearing up grass, um, and clipping the occasional fence, um, Aaron found a used, uh, what they're calling them, a municipal tractor, small, uh, slightly, what, slightly larger than four feet?
Fifty and a half inches overall width of the machine.
I got it. I got it. Um, and, and these things are designed to, to plow sidewalks, unlike the Bobcat that we have with, with a really, for this, for what we're using it for, it has an enormous plow that tends to drag over the, over the width of our sidewalks, tearing up grass as it goes. Um, even when you angle that thing one direction or another, it's still so wide that it tears up the grass. But we, we, we're just, we don't wanna keep banging our heads against the wall, tearing up grass, having to reseed the grass, and, and fighting with it. Um, we wanna do a little better, and this, this is a tool that, um, that we think will do that. Uh, Aaron, myself, and Nate went up, took a look at it, took it for a drive, um, talked to the, obviously talked to the salesman. I think this machine will alleviate a lot of our problems.
Now, this thing can actually stay on the sidewalk for ten inches of snow. Can it seed the sidewalk versus grass?
The, uh, so.
Right, the, the problem is going to persist.
I don't think it'll be as bad as all that, though, Rod, if, if you think how we did, went down Washington Street last year, and just a whole strip, man, on both sides, tearing it up.
Yeah, but if, if, if you angle the plow to one way, it's not gonna be as wide. We measured it down there, if you correct, if you remember correctly, measure, just turn it one way and wind roll the stuff off to one side. If it goes in the road, come along afterwards, it'll load and pick it up.
Current unit we're using is the Skidsteer, the Cat, which the unit itself is sixty nine inches wide with tracks. Current plow we have, full angle is sixty four inches, one way or another, and V plow is still sixty four inches.
But this one here's fifty two, right?
Fifty and a half inches.
You're talking three inches here.
Ten plus inches on the lower as well, yeah.
Tracks don't bother nothing, so.
I don't know, Walter was, Walter Duchard would say differently, because I could watch the plow tear up his yard in front of the school there. Um, it was even over a foot, because there's a pole right there, it was a bucket on the ground, so it was even over a foot under the lawn. And he complained to me about it, and that's it, it's you get down, but not, not my own. So this unit is a reduction of ten inches from the current snow blower we have, and that, there's different opinions on whether the V plow we're using, or you just run the snow blower. The snow blower we're using on the front of that machine is set up for just what it is, snowblowing with that. It's not meant for the sidewalks that we're using it for on a regular basis. It works, it's slow, and it's sixty inches wide, and then the machine's another four and a half inches on the outside of that as we go down through. Whereas this machine is built to stay within that forty eight, fifty inch range with the blower. Um, the unit itself would come with a hydraulic sander on the back with a half yard capacity, so it'll double the carrying capacity for our material that we put down after the machine goes through, and it has a bit fixed V plow for the front that comes with it, that's forty eight inches. So from our V plow that we use now, at sixty four inches, we're down to forty eight inches with that. And then it'll have an all angle plow that goes back and forth, and that's a five foot, so that, it goes back, so that would be the same as the V plow or the plow we have now. That one is still sixty inches, and when you angle it, you're getting it down to that fifty range, or somewhere about there. The unit's a two thousand twelve with twenty five hundred hours and nineteen thousand miles on it, it's got a Cummins motor in it. Um, the guy said it, it's one of the thinner ones he's had. Um, it's eighteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, as it sits delivered to us. Like Joe's saying, this, this, this machine is built to do what we're supposed to do.
Everything we bought is built for what we're supposed to do, the blow, the snow blower was, the V plow was, everything, every time we buy, we just buy stuff. I mean, something's gotta work, but I was led to believe the V plow was the answer, I was led to believe the snow blower was the answer.
So I was the one that bought the V plow, and the V plow that we had to buy was to make sure that we're covering the tracks of the machine. So if we can't cover the tracks of the machine, if I cut about a four foot V plow for the front of a sixty nine inch wide machine, like I've said, and when we keep blowing the snow over, at some point, that machine's gonna ride on top of the snow, because it's got big beautiful tracks on it. And now that plow's gonna be sitting up here above the ground, or the guys are gonna be tucking it right over forward, trying to reach the ground again. Those, the Skidsteers don't reach down, and that's the problem, is we're trying to account for a machine, the Cat, that's sixty nine inches wide, and our front device to clear snow is sixty four and a half, unless I, unless we go over the plow all the way up.
With the, with the new, I, I don't disagree with anything you said about getting something to fit. The other problem I saw, though, was the sidewalk sits here, and the, the grass that we were tearing up was quite a bit high. Where the sidewalk was flush, or the grass, it wasn't as bad, but in a lot of cases, where this new tractor here, what you're saying is it'll, it won't touch that higher sides, and it'll, it'll.
You're gonna have spots where it'll track off a little bit, yes.
Yeah, yeah, it'll be, it'll be a little bit.
But we're cutting it down from sitting at five foot plus wide on, like, so the sidewalks, the, the majority of them here are four foot wide. New standards, we're trying to get them all to five feet, that's not gonna happen overnight here. Um, so for us to stay at sixty inches, we're either gonna have to live with tearing up what we do, or the, the remedy is either to, to go out and rip up everyone's lawn, but I can't imagine that's gonna be in preparation for it.
But this, this is the first year we had this problem, because they plowed before the frosting. This is the first year we've tore up lawns. So I think we're, I think we're putting a cart before the horse here.
But I think, I think that's a weather, that's a winter, that's a yearly thing, that could change every year. You know, some, some day, some winters, you get a lot of snow before the frost gets in the ground, and you're not, if, if we're mandated to plow them sidewalks, we still gotta plow them sidewalks.
This is always the answer here, buy another piece of equipment, buy another piece of equipment. We're equipment poor in this.
I see what you're, I hear what you're saying.
I still say, if it's angled off to one side, you're not gonna tear it up anywhere near as bad as you tore it this year. So, that's.
I hear what you're saying, and, and that's been the problem, I think, is the, they've spent a lot of money on things without a lot of forethought, so. But, uh, my thoughts are that, uh, if you get one that's built for the sidewalks, and you're built for the job you're doing, can we get rid of some of this other equipment to compensate for some of this?
That's the drill, and if you protect any of our attachments, and we're very unfortunate that they don't deal with the attachment type stuff we have, we have to sell it. Uh, right, which, with this unit, I'm more than willing to, because I don't need it anymore. So I would sell the V plow and one of the snow blowers right after that. I would probably still keep one of the two snow blowers we have, one we resurrected from death, and the other newer one, um, for the purpose of whether we're able to have enough bodies in to go double up on sidewalks, or we can break down one or the other machines. So my, my thought would be to sell the V plow that we have, and one of the snow blowers, and keep the other one for the spare if we have, we can't pull issue with this, and if we need something to do.
This is what, and, uh, to Jay's point, though, we have spent a lot of money on equipment, with what Bob said, like, this is gonna fix, this is gonna fix, this is, this is causing a problem. This is not gonna cause us problems, right? If, this is gonna solve the problem.
Your best bet, when they build it for the job it's gonna do, that's where your best bet is. The equipment we've been buying is on, oh, we can make that work.
So this is like one of those things like Rob has?
Darlington has.
Mule kinda looking thing with a, with a.
Darlington has fourteen of them, the guy was telling us, he bought ten of them last year, three, four years, I was like, stop bragging about them, but yes. So that's what they're, that's, this is what they're signed for, is this application. They have many tools, as well as, I know we talked about we buy equipment, but some of the equipment we have, if we buy more attachments, they're even more useful, but we have, we love to go over that next step. This will get the right tool for this job. So where are we getting money to be to go labor, if we, if we go around and drag horse and?
So do you have money set aside to pay for this?
The reserve, sort of money, perhaps, I don't know. And with the allocation or the fund balance that was moved forward towards this year, there's more than enough there. Yeah, we still ninety one sitting there, ninety one eight. Well, minus, so we deposited eight thousand of that last year, so that'll come up for the SCAG, so there's eighty, about eighty two.
That is your mark for trucks, the future trucks.
The eighty two.
The money that's in the, the, the boards have spent down the equipment reserve fund for trucks and, and other equipment, and we're supposed to be building it back up for future trucks and, and big equipment that we need, and we just keep on nailing it with these nickel and diamond it with these smaller purchases. And we don't do very well sending some of this equipment.
Unfortunately, at the rate that we're trying to rebuild that account, it will never account to a new truck.
You're still.
There's still, they have a new, a brand new tandem sitting there at two hundred and ninety five thousand dollars.
Why would you need a tandem in this town?
I'm just saying, you have a truck sitting there, brand new.
But you don't need a tandem.
The current price they got is two hundred and ninety five thousand dollars. I know, so a, a new single axle is well in the realm of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars at that point. If a tandem that used to be a hundred and ninety thousand is now two ninety five, a single axle truck alone is gonna cost us a hundred and eighty thousand dollars plus.
That's when we go back to dealing with the state, with the state bits.
Well, let's get back to the.
To, to the question.
Question at the end. What's your pleasure, folks?
I don't wanna go through another winter and spring like, uh, we, we had some pretty irate folks.
We had a lot of irate people, and that was, that was a big complaint. And it, it's not just the plowing, it's not just the equipment, it's a little bit of everything. The people don't agree with cutting the lawns down so the plows can ride over, cause they don't understand, number one, they don't, and they don't like that to be tore up, so they want everything without giving up anything. If this is the right thing for the job, and it works way better, and it saves us labor in the long run, I think we oughta entertain the idea.
Is this the used piece of equipment, right? We're not docking a brand new piece of equipment, which I don't even wanna think about, what that new piece of equipment we got. We, we think it's the, we, we're, we're getting a used piece of equipment that we, we feel strongly that it's the right one from checking around. I don't know, I don't know how to get into checking it out any cheaper than this right here, is, is where, so I'm.
Well, somebody make a motion. One way or the other.
I'll, I'll make a motion to, where'd you say the money was coming from?
Public Works Reserve.
Public Works Reserve? And if it's, is, is that eighteen thousand, is there anything else needs to be added? Is there anything else needs to be added?
$18,750 in quotes, all the attachments that we have and delivery.
I'll make the motion to take $18,750 from our equipment reserve for the used sidewalk. All purchased.
Do you want to second?
You want to second that?
Yes.
You second? Well, I, I second it on the condition that we try to, to get rid of some of this other stuff that we're not gonna use and put the money back into their fund.
Fine, sell, are you okay with that? I am.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna vote yes, even though I know better. All those, are you voting yes? Are you voting?
I'm voting yes.
And you're voting?
I'm voting no. But I'm going back to what was said, what Ron said. We've been trying to build this fund up so that next time we have to buy a truck, we don't have to borrow so much money.
That's why.
And we're, and we're, every time you turn around, that's, that's the fix. We'll buy another piece of equipment. And I'm just, I'm against it. I'm not saying it's not gonna work. I'm not, I'm not saying it's probably not a good idea. But somewhere, we gotta stop buying equipment.
Right, that's why we gotta, we gotta try to turn some of the equipment that's not as useful as it should be.
But you're not gonna turn anywhere, you're not gonna turn anywhere near $18,000 for those two pieces of equipment.
I, I know that.
Moving right along. You may notice that there was reluctance there. Let's hope this works. Uh, water line, water line bond.
So this is the, this is the water line that Mr. Green had brought up earlier. Uh, this is to replace the water line downtown, along with a couple other small improvements. Aaron, correct me, one on Fourth and then one on Washington. Just Washington, so there's a, there's a place on Washington that needs to be repaired. We were hoping it would come in cheaper, so there was a possibility to use ARPA funds, but we're not that lucky. Uh, the total cost of the project is $1.3 million right now. With paving going to 2025, it gives us a lot more, a lot more breathing room on it, so there's no, there's no decision needs to be made today like we thought we might have had to do. We'll definitely need to have one more, at least one more meeting to talk about it. Um, an informational meeting, and it's gonna have to go on the ballot. But this is kind of the first.
Talk to the representatives, I will call that person at, at, they're in the middle. They're gonna be gone sooner. But there's infrastructure money, particularly aimed at water and sewer projects. We need to glom onto some of that.
So the, the 1.3, we have to bond for the total cost of the project, which is the 1.3, but that's worst case scenario. Um, this project, Aldridge and Elliott are, they're going through the process getting, once we get, once they get their preliminary done, there are grants and funding available to them, to us. So, but either way, the 1.3 needs to be bonded because that's the total project cost.
So for the next time that we talk about this, are we gonna get a little, a little more detail to put our hands in?
With the being pushed to 25, the discussion has been a large vote for the bond issue. If we did, at that point, if we determine where we're using property. So that project just falls in line with this sewer line inspection. Those lines have already been, um, in the 2015 analysis pegged for long term. Long term, maybe replaced, and we're working, working our way through that plan. So the plan will be to get those lines to the ground before that pavement comes through, so we don't have other happening.
My only comment would be, if we're gonna go ask for a bond for, for doing that, I've heard about the waste, the runoff work that needs to be done on the west side of the park, and there's, there's other water and runoff issues. Is there, if we're gonna go get a bond, is there a way we, you can try to package? What, what, we get one bond and we fix the majority of our issues? I'm just worried that, that we went and asked not that long ago for a bond for our wastewater plant, we're coming back in this March and ask for water. I'm pretty sure that doesn't fix, we've probably got a lot of other water sewer runoff issues. I just, I have no idea what that...
It's not runoff, we're not talking about, we're just talking about the water line.
But, but the...
You'd like a comprehensive idea before we go to ask for a bond for an ass?
If we're gonna fix, when you start talking, getting infrastructure money, if we're gonna fix infrastructure, let's fix the infrastructure. What's, at least get out there and get an idea of what needs to be fixed, because I'm not even sure of the inventory of what needs to be fixed. So to sit here and prioritize, the reason we're prioritizing this water line down here is because we want to beat the paving, so we don't have to worry.
It might be worthwhile to dig up that, that 10-year plan that Aldridge did. And look at that again and see if there's more to tack on there.
River Street's on that list as well. It was pulled from the 2017 project because the road was paved the year before. The report was finalized and they said it's senseless to dig up that road now. But that road should have been part of that initial priority list. It would fit North Main, fourth part of Forest Street, and all those other parts of the project that we've got here. So that's, we're trying to beat that hurdle.
It might be worthwhile to discuss that all. That makes, that makes sense. So we can move forward on that. If you can get us a copy, if you can find that copy and give us a copy and let us see what we're looking at.
Yep.
Okay. Now we have approval of the application for a special permit, special event permit.
Yep, so this is a application for a special event permit. This is the, this is for High Rose Vineyards. Uh, they'll be vending down at the wine, spirits, and cheese tasting August 19th. So I just need the board approval and the board chair signature.
So you want a motion to approve the special event permit application from?
High Rose.
High, High Rose U.C.?
LLC.
LLC.
High Rose or High Roads?
Row, R-O-W-S.
R-O-W-S. LLC.
Where they at?
Ripton.
Isn't it?
Ripton.
That's a vineyard.
Yes.
Have you had no wine? Do you want to second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You should get hold of Joe Larmy. He just, he just put in for a wine tasting place in his, in his...
I have his liquor license, I just got it today.
Yeah.
Yep.
No, but...
He may want to do.
That's going to be...
What, what was that date again?
August 19th.
Yeah, but where?
Downtown Fair.
Downtown Fair.
Oh.
Yep. That should be fun. That was one of my favorite things we did before COVID.
I, I, I can drink wine, I don't like beer.
Uh, parking lot, anything, I mean, we know we're gonna hear about Adam Street. Uh, zoning regs, I can tell you, are moving forward. There should have been some. We're, it's been kind of wait and see with Rutland Regional, but I think we're getting, they're getting there now. Same with the town plan, everybody got that, and they're gonna start. We got a list of things that may have to be changed because of new state that, that not changed, just addressed. You know, so there's a couple of, there's a couple of things. But our town plan is pretty good, it looks good, everybody likes it. So it won't be a big fix, it'll be a little tweaking. That's all I got on that. Anything else? All right, Ford Roundtable.
So there's a couple of things that's, I've been thinking about here. Talk about the mower for the cemeteries and the, and the grounds and the park and all that, but road sides, we should do something serious and think about roadside mowing other than just renting a machine for a week. And I don't think that's really gonna work out all that well. I mean, it's just, it's, it's already been planned for this year, you gotta make the best of it. But we're gonna have to start thinking about doing something down the road.
I think mowing should be done twice a year anyways.
It should be done anytime you have a day that you've got an extra guy that can put out there, especially at intersections and hills and curves and all that stuff. And, and, and I agree with you, twice a year would be good. And I, and you're not gonna get it all done in a week, there's no, there's no way. If you run that mower 24/7 with lights, not gonna do it. And, you know, so we're gonna...
And what happens doing it that way, or what do you, how can you see if you're not, before you hit something? You know, there's just so much light you can put out on it and...
I know, I know.
I used to mow road sides for the town.
I know, you can't, I'm, I'm saying that, but I know it can't be done. But we're gonna have to, uh, we're gonna have to address this equipment issue as far as the mowers and things like that.
Budget season is coming.
That's why I mentioned it.
Anything else?
Um, I was, had the opportunity to go down to the sewer plant today. Got another tour there. It was very impressive, and the guys have done a great job down there. So just want to pass that information along. And we got a, got a good, high-quality installation there. I think you, I don't know if you guys have been down, but...
I've been waiting until it was all done to, I need to...
Down anytime. There, it's pretty good down there. They're proud of it. That's all I have.
Most of the stuff I had was covered earlier. There is one thing I want. There's a section in the union contract that I want to make sure that it's used in every day. And it's section 205 for the rest periods. And it states right in here that breaks should be taken at the location. Employees are expected to work at the time of the lunch or break and shall not leave the work site in anticipation of breaks and periods. I want to see this, I want to see this enforced mark. And I think we also should look at stops at stores all the time. I think that should be done between 9:00, 9:30, and 12:00 and 12:30. There's just too many times you go buy and you see the equipment sitting at the store. So you buy a pack of cigarettes, buy a soda. And if they're in there, they're not working, so... That's all I got.
I only had one, I was getting a complaint about a noise problem on Second Street with a band playing, making an unbelievable amount of decibel level noise.
What band?
Well, I, they said it was, no, it was just a private homeowner who, they have, I guess it's a group with a band. I told the individual who that if, best solution was to talk to their neighbor, which didn't really get them very far. Uh, and, and the reason I wanted to bring it up is because I didn't know anyone else had heard. Because we do have a couple, a couple ordinances that deal with that kind of an issue. There's noise after 10 o'clock, we have a noise in the nighttime ordinance, but we also have another, uh, another ordinance. And if it's before 10 o'clock, it follows under the disorderly conduct ordinance, believe it or not. I told him just, and I'm glad I still have Dale here to say, what I told the individuals, I says, "Look, understand that I, I hear what you're saying, that the noise is greater than jet engine landing in an airport that was coming across from there. But if you haven't, if you talk to your neighbor and you can't get it addressed when it's happening, you need to call the police. We'll get it, we'll, we'll go through the process." But understand what that usually doesn't help the relationship very good. Uh, so, uh, try to deal with it if you can, but I, I think that, uh, that's the only one I have.
That's it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Couple, right. Uh, which one of the phone?
Uh, they replaced the pump, the water was a little funky, so they drained it, and then the pump was bad, so they yanked it and replaced the pump.
So it's back up, all right, okay. I, I didn't notice it today, you know?
Yep, uh, yesterday morning or yesterday, they were up in the air now.
One for Dale. Have you, have you gotten any complaints about, there was a whole bunch of chatter on Facebook about fireworks going off on Carnarvon Street or...
But, um, it's Friday night. Yeah, we couldn't get out of the station, we had something in the station, great statement. But yeah, some of it, the, the parking lot back here. And somebody called and at least called us and said that, I think it's kids that are running around.
It's late.
Yeah, and the trash that got picked up, I know it's a complaint about, hey, Aaron, we were talking about this. Some trash that got picked up by TPW, where they all clean, you know, pick up trash on Washington Street. That was the actual...
Bricks.
The bricks, yeah, the big bricks. His neighbor, I'm sure, sold. Oh, well, yeah. So, yeah, because the complaints came in like in about a 15-minute period. Fourth Street Extension, Fourth Street, Washington Street, Carnarvon Street, Second Street. I mean, it sounded like it was going everywhere.
I saw the blocks laying on the side of the roads and all, it's pretty...
Well, we followed the blocks everywhere, you know, somebody said the kids were moving. Like, so that, that was it. Yeah, we went, after we finally got out, we followed the rest of them there, and found the kids.
One more for you, uh, cemetery, there's a lot of activity late, late at night. Oh, south side, the...
Cedar Grove.
Cedar Grove. A couple of people live across, I've seen...
The gates are locked at night?
Oh, it's, it's people walking in with lights. But it's, it's late at night, parking up by the barn and then walking in, whatever they're doing. I, I, it doesn't, it seems kind of nefarious at 2:00 in the morning. I don't think they're picking night crawlers. So, just if you...
They have that kind of suspicion?
No, it's a good point. Ah, yes. So that's it, so it's a review of financials.
Make a motion to approve the payroll account for $39,359.41.
Do you want to second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Paul Epstein?
Okay.
Make a motion except the warrants or pay the warrants for $678,498.61.[1736.96][1737.28]$678,498.61.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Paul Epstein?
Checkbook status is $738,054.37.
All right, and I'd say that would mean that we would, I'd entertain a motion to go and executive session. There are actually two things now.
Oh, make the motion to go and executive session for personnel and labor relations, one. BSA 313A1.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Those opposed?